I just found out. Okay, ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Wardslar.
Here.
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 Here. Present.
Present. Please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Ms. Schroeder. Please vote.
Yes.
Just one comment on the consent agenda. Can we pull out number six, please? That says cooperative agreement with communities of Wildwood for CMT training.
Yes. We'll move that to the regular agenda. Do I have any other changes? Okay. Do you amend your motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. The celebrations. We'll start with academic all-stars. We celebrated academic all-stars in April. Throughout the month of April, our academic all-star students were recognized for their achievements. These fourth and fifth grade students earned advanced, proficient, and significant growth scores on last year's MAP test. A big thanks to all of the volunteers and sponsors who helped put each of the events together so students could celebrate their achievements with their families. Missouri State's National History Day winners from South Middle School. Sixteen South Eagles represented Joplin at the state competition, and the following eighth graders will represent Missouri at the National History Day competition in June in Maryland. First-place junior group for website, we have Jackson Drinkwitz and Devon Gurley. Second-place junior group website, we had Colson Hing, Dalton Gray, and Jordan Wongi. Missouri's 2025 Junior Division National History Day Teacher of the Year. We are proud to recognize Dr. Van Otterloo, who was named this year's Junior Division National History Day Teacher of the Year for the state of Missouri. Congratulations. Our teams going to Nationals could not have done it without your guidance.
Congratulations.
Our Teacher Proud Tuesday May winner is Kelsey Harmon with Dover Hill. Ms. Harmon teaches special education students in the CBSS program at Dover. Congratulations, Ms. Harmon. We had three of the four Golden Apple of Winners in the Joplin School District this year. The Joplin Area Chamber of Commerce recognized outstanding educators in the Joplin, in the Joplin area at the Golden Apple Award Ceremony. Congratulations to Stephanie Lynch from Soaring Heights, Erin Geeding from McKinley, and Brad Douglas from Joplin High School for winning this prestigious award. We also have a National Merit Scholarship winner who is here tonight to receive another award. Christian Kavaner is one of 2,500 students out of more than 15,000 finalists in the nation to earn a National Merit Scholarship. Best wishes as you pursue the study of astrophysics at the California Institute of Technology. And this past Sunday, there were close to 500 seniors who walked across the stage to receive their diploma. Congratulations to all of the graduates. We wish you the best in your future, and great job, Dr. Oliver, on a successful graduation. Okay, now we'll have the student advisor report, please, Ms. Randstall.
All right. The Pitt State Statistical Contest. Christian Kavaner and Ty Matheson recently won PSU statistical poster contest. Their poster advances to the American Statistical Association's National Contest. Their poster used elements of physics, psychology, and statistics. The MSSU Earth Day Contest. Four Joplin students placed in the MSSU Earth Day Contest this year. This contest has three categories: an informational poster related to conservation, an art project created from recycled materials, and a product category that involves upcycling other items into something useful. Libby Munn won second-place poster with a $75 prize. Carly Dowdy won a first-place product with a $100 prize. Adam Bader won second-place product with a $75 prize, and Grace Fajardo won honorable mention in the art category with a $25 prize. Science Research Camp. As one last hurrah, science research students went to Eastmoreland on May 7th to hold a science camp for Eastmoreland fifth graders. And there are some photos depicting that. Boys tennis. Our boys tennis team took home the district championship for the second year in a row. Our record for the season is 18-4, and we are one of the top teams in the state. COC Art Show. Students from Joplin, Leb City, Carthage, and Neosho compete every year in the Central Ozark Conference Competitive Art Show. Congratulations to all competitors. Esports at State. Esports competed at State in multiple categories and brought home some awards. Our Varsity Super Smash Brothers Ultimate Team took second place at State, and our Varsity Valorant team did as well. The Varsity League of Legends team took fourth place. Congratulations.
Thank you. Now, yeah. We have the Joplin School Foundation here with a presentation tonight.
I'm pleased to be here representing the foundation tonight to give two awards. And more than 20 years ago, the last family established an endowment with the Joplin Schools Foundation, and it was in memory of Fred Lass. And tonight, they wanted that money to go to teachers, whether ever, since we've got so many excellent teachers in our school district. And tonight, Ms. Plaice is here to give that check to Shannon Cooper. And the foundation matches that check for a support staff member of our district. And when I think of this person, when I was a little girl, there was a cartoon on that had a theme song that said, "He's here, he's there, he's everywhere." And when I think of this person, I think of Aaron Brown. He's at the high school. I don't know that Aaron's here tonight, but he's a terrific person. If you have problems with your computers, he's just everywhere. He's there in daytime helping teachers with things, and he's there after hours helping us if we have special programs or things that he sets up. So he's a great recipient, and he's a reward. Each are $500 checks.
Okay, now we have some special presentations, and we'll go over the podium.
Okay, first, we have our students from the International Science and Learning Fair that competed just recently, Hannah Sargeant and Christian Kavaner. Please come up and contribute. And Christian Kavaner.
I had the opportunity to spend some time with those two, and I was enlightened, by the way, with all their science knowledge, I was a book. Thank you, Ms. Boyer, for coaching and teaching students, as well as Mr. Plaice for statistics. Everybody, yes.
I appreciate that. Can I add that Christian didn't want shot, but had shot? You can have one hit.
So next is our Constitution team. We have had a very, very fine Constitution team for more than 30 years now, which is exemplary, right? And we look to estimate that our teacher has done an outstanding job for many years. And there's only a few schools that are really talented enough and really take the opportunity to go after the state competition. There's probably more than their work at Black Lives Matter School, but these are the best schools in the state of Missouri who can go off test soon. So I appreciate it again, and it's you and the team. And we'll announce everybody that's here tonight. Also, they're one of our local attorneys. Purr's, for our team, have also provided medals for students tonight as well, so we would appreciate that. So you come up and get your medal, and congratulations, and you get a state championship. Adam Baker, Lily Kate Binfield, Christian Kavaner, Duncan Bogarty, Parker Henman, Josiah Hazelwood, Ty Matheson, Kendall Ramsey, and Kate Tyson. So thank you again for your participation. I know it's another great effort. Again, the students who are at my school and teachers all the way through our system of the period, maintain what you desire, and we'll have to go forward and pursue things that we want to do. I want to really show my appreciation to the board for keeping these types of things going. A lot of school boards don't keep something like this going because, you know, it's not super famous or anything. But we appreciate that, and I am very glad to get some of the best students I can reach and so.
If you're a success, I would have to say.
Congratulations.
Okay, and we are going to recognize our past president for the last two years, Riley Hartwell. Riley, I want to thank you for your service in President's Chair the last two years. One thing you've accomplished in the district along with the board, and we appreciate your leadership going through all those things. And we will continue to move on with your leadership, as well as everybody else in the board's leadership, working as a team. So thank you very much. Come on up.
The Superintendent's Data Report.
Okay. We have Dr. Wongi here with two very important reports for us that lean back towards our strategic focus to help improve services for students and also teachers, as well as our gifted education students.
Yes, so I'm gonna have Carrie Fields, Shannon Cooper, and Heather Serberg come join us. These ladies have all been, come up here to the hot seats. They're so excited. These ladies are part of our Career Ladder Committee. This work started last spring to implement for this year, so they're just gonna take you through a quick report of how this year went and an update of heading into next year. Carrie's leading the way, I believe.
I am. So first, I want to say that from all the teachers in my building and just the teachers I know throughout the district, it's been an awesome opportunity for us to get reimbursed for all the extra work we do outside of school. So we can't thank you enough for allowing that. And so here's our first update for the year one and our year two. So the purpose of Career Ladder is to recognize educators, to enhance student success, and provide salary supplements. It's reward effective teaching practices and dedication. It's through tutoring, enrichment, and professional growth, and it's for voluntary, non-contracted activities. So here's a snapshot. We had 269 initial participants, teachers who began the program. We had 262 retained in the district, which was a pretty high retention rate. And then we had 243 total completers. It looks like 226 completed the same stage, 17 dropped to stage one, and then 26 did not complete. And this is where...
Yeah, so our retention data that we ran for this, 98% of those who completed Career Ladder are staying with us next year. And then you can see the district overall, as it sat when we ran this data, 94%, and then 95 when we exclude those retirees. So Career Ladder excluding retirees at 99. So you can see that while the percentages aren't drastically different, it is showing a positive retention for those who are participating.
I would say beyond the data, too, just as a teacher who knows other teachers in other districts, it's a huge incentive to teach in Joplin because we have that opportunity. So reasons for nonparticipation. It comes down to a time burden. It's just extra hours outside of school. The tutoring requirement is a challenge, especially for secondary teachers. And then just teachers who have personal obligations, family commitments outside of school hours, that we took that into, we considered that for revisions for this year. So our response as a committee was to expand the tutoring definition to emphasize additional learning opportunities, to make that a little bit more flexible with what tutoring can look like, then adding just more flexibility all around, to have better alignment with teacher field focus, improved the logs so they auto-populate for easier tracking, and then we streamlined the process for a clearer timeline and documentation. So what's working well? The elementary impact, increased tutoring availability, strong community feel, family engagement. I personally, at Jefferson, I feel like it's really increased that community engagement piece, and we've had a lot of teachers just be really creative in how they can earn those hours and just give back to our kids in even more ways than their typical school day. For professional growth, we've had deep engagement in books, book studies, additional avenues for PD, increased professional learning, and again, really creative professional learning opportunities have been.
The book studies that happened this year were really fun to watch, different teams across the district, and the studies that they were doing on some books was really very encouraging.
And the fact that they share it with their staff, too. It's not just an isolated learning. It's shared and collaboration growth as well. Overall assessment, we're very satisfied with implementation. There's been more positives than hurdles, and anticipating a state assessment with all that extra tutoring.
So we'll see the summer with the governor's final approval of the budget. As it stands right now, we're very optimistic that Career Ladder will continue to be funded. That's how we're moving forward. That's always a hurry and wait, but we're very optimistic with where that will head this year. This financial overview shows the fiscal impact, so this is 40% local, 60% state, so you can see that breakdown. One thing to consider with our local is we do have to pay benefits to that, and so there is a little more than 40% when we calculate the benefits that we have to put with that. So that's where we stood for this year. And then...
So goals for year two are to maintain that high retention, continue those strong completion rates and teacher retention, broaden definitions, so respect teacher field focus and tutoring requirements, build community, sustain after-school momentum and engagement, and add stage three. I'm personally really excited about that. So increased opportunities for veteran teachers, and that we have opportunities during the summer to earn hours.
So year one, we started August, so you didn't see summer clocking of hours. We purposely did that to get started on the right foot back to school for year two. They're submitting plans right now. Just to give you an update of that, 14 have already committed to stage one, 36 to stage two, and we have 179 at stage three. And this is within the first week that we've opened up the plans to be submitted. So you can see who's eligible for '25, '26. We have budgeted, I think John brought this up last month, we have budgeted as if everyone will participate to be conservative on that side, and then we're just monitoring they have until the beginning of September to submit those plans for next year. But I would say our veteran teachers are beyond thrilled for stage three, so kudos to our finance team for helping make that happen. It's been a huge celebration for us.
As of today, in my building, all of my Career Ladder teachers, they've already submitted their plans, they've been approved, and they're already clocking hours. So, and I think they're all doing stage three.
Yeah, that's awesome. Any questions for our committee?
You said we have to pay benefits for that. Is that just PSRS compensation?
Yes. And Medicare.
And stage three, is this an extra player?
Yeah, so it's 100 hours. So stage one is 50 hours, stage two is 75 hours, and stage three is 100 hours. And there is a pay incentive. Stage three makes more than stage two, stage two makes more than stage one per hour.
What is stage three?
5,000.
It's a trip.
Right, yeah.
A lot of incentive for the teachers to have.
I think it's great. I appreciate you guys presenting tonight. I've been a big believer in this program. I think it's a classic win-win. Helps the teachers, helps the students, helps the community, and, you know, glad to see the participation that you had this year, and I hope it's even better next year.
I think it will be. The kids have been so excited to be able to stay after for so many different opportunities, and they're just so excited to be there at school after and to have that personalized time with educators. So thank you all for supporting them.
Well, and thank you for putting in all the work as the committee, because I remember back in the day when I was on Career Ladder, our Career Ladder Committee worked so hard to make sure we had a good program, and we couldn't have done it then without them. Same thing here. You are, your committee is a big part of the success of this program and the continued success. And you have to review all the plans and approve them, and so you have a lot of work. And I'm sure all the staff appreciates that as well.
And I will echo with the committee, they have kept the integrity of the purpose of Career Ladder very pure. I've had to make them loosen up a little bit on some things because they are so passionate about keeping the integrity. So for that, I'm very thankful. They've been a great committee.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Next up, I will invite Dr. Van Otterloo for our gifted report. She is equally excited. You know, educators, put them in a classroom with children, they can rock all day long, put them in front of adults, and they throw things at me. Dr. Van Otterloo is our gifted coordinator for the district, so she partners with Mr. Plyler as the administrator in helping serve our gifted population. And so she's gonna take you through some information, and we may bounce back and forth on a couple of pieces, but this was, this was a task that we knew was going to be a big deal when we got started, and we had this date as our goal, that by the May board meeting, we would have something to share with you to give an update of what we're calling Phase One, which is improving our gifted identification process and making that more structured and streamlined. So I will turn the presentation over to her.
So like Dr. Wongi said, that we're starting with identification. So some of the numbers have been a little down in the last few years, and we knew that maybe that was something to do with maybe a misunderstanding of giftedness, or we just have so much on our plates that teachers maybe aren't seeing, you know, or finding the time to necessarily, like, refer kids. And so we wanted a really clear process, and so that's what we were working on as a committee, a gifted committee, where we invited teachers and counselors and learning services in to help kind of develop our strategies. So obviously, the vision for gifted services is to challenge our gifted kids and to help prepare them for a changing world. And our mission is to provide that intervention. I think a lot of people don't understand that giftedness is an intervention necessary trait of students. Like, they, there's a podcast I listen to called "They'll Be Fine on Their Own," and that is not the case for many gifted kids. And so we want to make sure that we are finding those kids so that they can be with their intellectual peers, they can be with trained gifted educators to kind of help push them to that full capacity. So these are really long, but I put in, like, italics, kind of the biggest pieces that I think are important from the Missouri State definition. It talks about mental capacity. So I talk to my kids a lot about the vessel they have to fill, you know, and the size of their vessel, and that that vessel is best filled by the classroom with additional services from certified gifted teachers. So we're never here to say that the general ed classroom isn't good for our kids. We're here to say that teaming up with the general ed classroom is the best way to offer our gifted students what they need. So one of the big things to know is that our gifted students come from all kinds of backgrounds: racial, ethnic, cultural, socioeconomic. And so that's where we thought that implementing a norms reference and proven universal screener would help us best make sure that we were identifying as many kids as we have. So the identification process right now starts with an initial screening, and we call it universal because we do universally screen a grade level. So we started this year with first grade, and we're gonna be adding third grade as kind of a second collection point for new students, or students who, this is like a data point that we learned, is that IQ solidifies after nine. And so in first grade, they're not nine, obviously, and so we wanted to give another point for that. So we went with the NGAT, which is the Naglary General Abilities Test, and this was created by someone who's worked in the field of gifted education for decades. And I actually met one of the co-writers of the test, and it kind of really helped me understand the screening process and why it's important. So those students that score in the 95th percentile or higher on the NGAT are then moved into the further IQ testing, and that's a one-on-one testing with our IQ testing person. And then at stage three, this is part of the Missouri guidelines, is they also have to have an academic achievement in the 95th percentile. And that's another reason to continue looking at them again in the third grade, is maybe they are, like, in a situation where maybe they're not achieving fully, but maybe by third grade, they've caught up with their peers, and so we don't want to miss any of them.
Another really valuable data fact that I know the board will respect, because we've talked about mobility, we dug into third grade and found our current third-grade cohort, only 56% of them have been with us since kindergarten. And so it was another data point to help give reason of doing universal at first and third to capture those students that maybe didn't get it in first grade with us.
So yeah, this kind of just goes back with that. These are kind of the steps, the universal screener, then those criterias beyond that to where we are screening them. We also still have the referral-based screening process. The particular subtest that we're doing is considered non-verbal, and so maybe parents think that their kid is a verbal kid, and they're like, hey, can you look at them again? And so we have that opportunity for them to reach out and to refer them that way. We have a parent and teacher rating scale, much like what you might see for ADHD kind of scales, that kind of thing, but this one is norms referenced, nationally norms referenced for gifted characteristics, and then the results are sent to the parents to know where they're at. So this is that stage two and three, the IQ test administered one-on-one, that's just best practices, and then the academic testing. If we don't already have a 95th percentile score on them in something academic, then that goes to a norms reference test that the examiner also gives. So here's the appeal. So obviously, nothing is 100% perfect, and so, and we know that, and we're still learning with this, too. So we have the opportunity to submit appeals. We've solidified that in a guidebook to help parents know. We have forms, that kind of thing. We have a timeline that we've set for ourselves to make sure that they're not just testing right away again. We want them to have a little bit of time, a little bit of time away to maybe build up some confidence again, you know? And then they're administered the NGAT again, but they get the other subtests, so the verbal or the quantitative. There is a waiting period of one There is a waiting period of one year between tests. That's part of that whole letting the IQ solidify. And we keep those kids on our radar that are within like a confidence interval that we believe could, after solidification, be, like, hit the marks that the state requires. So we have the team who looks over the appeal, we approve it, and then the decision's made to move them forward. So next step, so we really want to build capacity within our teachers to understand what gifted education is. I think a lot of times, we've called it the gifted program, and it is a program, but really, it's a service, it's an intervention, and we want to make sure that teachers understand that also, that it is a way to help another population with special learning needs. We want our structured identification to follow straight with the Missouri State steps in our multi-step process, and we want to make sure we're doing that with fidelity, checking all that. And then we want to continue developing gifted services. At the elementary school, we have two great teachers working with our second to fifth graders. And then in middle school, if we don't have a certified gifted educator, we have some cluster grouping options for gifted kids, but we don't have a full service menu for them, and we're really hoping to do that. One of our biggest obstacles is gifted certified educators. It's a Missouri obstacle in general because there are constantly jobs out there available for gifted educators, but not everybody is certified because it is basically like an 18-hour credit hour certification that many people don't realize they want until they have a master's degree, and then that's an obstacle. So we've been talking about different ways to get that too. And we want to be sure that we're involving all our stakeholders, parents, other teachers, and the gifted educators that are working with the students.
Awesome. So Phase One is really the identification process that we wrapped up this year. We had a gifted committee that worked on that. Counselors came on board with that. And then Phase Two will really be looking into the programming. We know this is an important topic for our community, and so Heather and I knew, once we opened this up, there was going to be a lot to work through, but we've made a lot of good progress this first year of starting to address those needs. Any questions for Dr. Van Otterloo?
I have a question related to high school. Because you know, at high school, we didn't really have a gifted program or something, but there are students there who definitely are gifted students. What types of services or interventions do we have in place, are we putting in place for those kids?
Yeah, I would, I would say that will be in the programming discussions and conversations, similar to what middle school is facing right now. So we haven't really opened that can quite yet, but that is definitely on the horizon.
It's definitely a statewide topic of conversation. Every time I'm in a meeting with our gifted person at DESI and any other gifted teachers, they're like, what are you doing for high school? What are you doing for high school? Because we understand that they're gifted 24 hours a day, seven days a week, not just from second to fifth grade or second to eighth grade, you know? And so we want to support them. So there's lots of options that we're going to be looking into.
Thank you.
Can you push through the services, second to eighth grade?
Second to eighth grade, yes, for sure.
Thank you for your leadership, Dr. Van Otterloo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Health and dental plan update, Ms. Toth.
Okay, on our health and dental plan this month, our expenses were $7 million for the whole year, $7,153,558. We did have a very large month of expenses of $1,175,143, and that was mainly, we had one large claim over $200,000, and we had five others that were a little over $20,000 each. So overall, our health plan is down $1,115,652 this year, or about 36%. April did have five weeks of claims, so that had an impact on the fund as well. So I probably will be making a budget adjustment for the health fund, and that's just kind of a budget neutral. We, since it's a fund nine that's separate from our normal budget, we just have a kind of a budget out there that we keep revenue and expenditures the same. Revenue is not as much as we've been, as our expenditures have been over in the budget, and we don't expect them to be until, I mean, hopefully that we're going to continue to maintain our current rates, but just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Thank you. Financial statements, please.
Okay, and our condensed financial statements this month, revenue is kind of projecting very similar to the prior year expenses as well. We are not seeing anything that's coming up in this year that we are projecting for the end of the year. Any questions on the financial statements?
Thank you. Ms. Worsler, are there any public comments? Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, remembering that we pulled item number six?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion from Ms. Schroeder, a second from Mr. Hurd. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Regular agenda accounts payable, please. I'm sorry, we, we'll move, sorry, we'll move the items six and seven to the top of the regular agenda.
So we would like to have both of you before we go to this point. You're going to present at the same time. We have both JESP and JNEA present tonight. We work with JESP. You can have lunch here. We work with JESP on language, so we're bringing the whole agreement, and then, of course, we negotiate salaries with both you each year. So I think it would be nice, Burt, I'll have you introduce yourself because you're new, this is the first time the board has heard of you. And then I'd like for each of you to introduce yourself, not just with your role with the union, but let them know what you do here for Joplin School as well. Burt, can you?
Yes, I'm Burt Lewis. I am a former educator from Kansas who joined the Missouri National Education Association in August of last year and jumped right in becoming Joplin's representative. I live in Carthage, so it's a close commute for me. I want to say this first year has been absolutely amazing. Mr. Crawford is wonderful to work with, easy, and I appreciate Dr. Dickey, Mrs. Toth, and Mr. Harding, and Mr. Crawford, all in their help and leadership showing me how Missouri negotiates for the contract. I really appreciated their work and what they did in making me feel welcome and not pointing out how many times, hey, Burt, you got that wrong, let's work this way. So I appreciate that, and it's enjoyable to work with Joplin.
Thank you.
I'm Carrie, and that's JESP president.
I also, utility group, skilled crowd.
I'm Jason Cannon. I'm a union member representing the drivers and the bus aids. I am a driver trainer as well as recruiter for the Transportation Department, and I want to say that it's been an interesting ride this year, making sure all the kids get to and from school.
Crystal Stokstanner, I am the JNEA for the teachers, counselors, and librarians. I am the co-president this year, and I teach at North Mill School, I have American History eighth grade.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to start with full contract, and then we'll do some?
Carrie, do you have some more you'd like to start with? I think it would be best to start with you, since we did the full contract with you. I didn't know if you wanted to mention that Crystal, your vice president wasn't able to be here tonight. She has a family that is ill, family member that is struggling, and so she could not be here, or she would have liked to have been. So I just think it's good for you guys to know the names and kind of who our union representatives are and those types of things. Carrie, if you want to go ahead and lead with whatever discussions you have with the...
Okay, this year, JESP bargain, language, and financials. We were very happy to have members on our team from all the groups covered under this contract, which brings knowledge and understanding of each group and their needs so as to have better representation and input for each group. This year, we were able to change language concerning paid holidays for nine, 10, and 11-month full-time and part-time unit employees. We made changes to match what was already impressed, practiced by the district. We were able to add a column to the seniority list, recognizing the original date of hire with the district, as well as the date of hire within your current classification. We feel like longevity and continuous time with the district are very important to our unit. We were able to make some changes for meal reimbursements while on out-of-town, school-sponsored activities, which will be beneficial to unit employees when traveling. Financials were agreed upon by both teams after much number crunching. JESP was pleased that the district took steps to reward all of the unit, but also recognize longevity and seniority. Financially, we are also pleased to have all members in our unit will be in compliance with the new minimum wage as of January 2026. This contract is beneficial to JESP and the district. We look forward to another great year, and thank you to our team as well as the district team for all the hard work that went into bargaining.
Okay. Do you, do we decide?
Yeah, you can go ahead. Yeah, we'll take one vote for all of it together.
All right. Now, everyone that knows me knows I need to look at my notes or I'll go off script, and that's not very good. So Joplin National Education Association, our teachers ratified the proposed salary schedule on May 12th by a majority vote. A little history behind the ratification and the exclusive rep. In 2015, we voted as a district, as teachers, counselors, and librarians to have JNEA as the exclusive rep, and we ratified our first contract and bargain salary schedule on 16. And we've worked with Joplin Admin to create positive working conditions for all of our bargaining unit. I personally want to show my appreciation by saying thank you to Justin, thank you to Shelley, thank you to Jordan for being so open to working with us, but also collaborating with us. But in closing, I'm going to ask for all of us, if that's okay, for both JNEA and JESP, for the Joplin School Board to vote in favor of JNEA's bargain salary schedule and the ESP ratified schedule and contract, or agreement.
I move to approve the agreement between Joplin Schools' JNEA and JESP as presented, please.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Ms. Schroeder. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you all for all of your work.
I just want to add, before you guys leave, I know that you guys have shown a lot of thanks to us and how we've worked with you, but that feeling's mutual as well. I think that not all the schools have the relationships with your unions that we do, and I think that we see you as not an adversary, but as an ally, that we can discuss difficult things and work through difficult situations. And so we appreciate the relationship that we've been able to foster with you and want to continue the same.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you all, very much.
Accounts payable, Ms. Toth.
Okay. Our bill list for this month is $7,618,417 compared to a year ago of $6,536,860. Any questions?
I have a motion to approve accounts payable.
Some moved?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mr. Robertson. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Fund transfer authority, Ms. Toth.
Every year, we are allowed, per the rules with DESI, to transfer 7% over to the Capital Projects Fund, and so where I'm bringing this tonight, that amount right now, it's, and it could fluctuate a little bit, but it should be $3,842 that we could move over to the Capital Projects Fund, and I'm just asking for authority to do that, to help with projects that we have going on in the future.
I would make a motion to approve the fund transfer authority as presented by Shelley.
Second. A motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Musser. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Illustrative math, Dr. Mongi.
Yes, I'm going to have Dr. Young come up and present. So we had a math committee that has been underway, and so I will have him share a few thoughts for the action item that you see here tonight.
Yes, so I'm going to give you guys a little bit of a background. We started work with the PK-12 Math Committee last year, and this team, we kicked off by developing a philosophy for math instruction. This was essentially to serve as an anchor for us to constantly go back to as we were reviewing resources, as we were working on developing units of study, all of that with vertical alignment in mind. So with this entire process, we talked about the importance of conceptual understanding and procedural fluency, and how those have to be intertwined with math instruction. So a lot of the work of the team was very intentional with having those things in mind. And with that being said, we ended up reviewing a number of resources for grades six through eight. Illustrative math by Imagine Learning is the one that the team ended up settling on, not just because of the conceptual understanding and the procedural fluency, but also it's inquiry-based, so it is tied to like real-world experiences for kids and making it relevant to them. So that is something that also aligns with a lot of what we've been doing in the district with the Building Thinking Classroom strategies that some teachers have had the opportunity to attend this year. So really illustrative math, it is a resource that the teachers are going to have access to. You'll notice in the action item, it mentions five years, but on the quote, it mentions six. That is because they are offering us a zero year for free as we continue to work to develop out our units of study, our Canvas courses, and make everything a nice, pretty package for teachers as they use this and instruct kids with math instruction.
And that year zero will start next year.
Yes.
And so reason for your approval tonight is that committee would like to start that work next year within their units to be ready for the following year. And then the illustrative math also has features that our high school team uses, and so this will align six, eight, to nine, 12, so we can get some better vertical alignment was a major mission of the PK-12 Committee.
Mrs. Sherrick, I move to approve Imagine Learning Illustrated Mathematics as presented, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Ms. Schroeder. Is there a discussion?
One question. How many total students we have in six, seventh, eighth grade now?
It's about 1,600 students.
All right, so I'm just doing math. That's what this is about, right? So 1,600 students, 25,000 a year. Not a bad investment.
No, it's about $17 per people.
Yeah, not a bad investment.
Is this math done on the computer?
So the teacher resources are printed. This does have a full integration with Canvas, which is our learning management system that the teachers use in secondary. So, yes.
Stratate, it has tech, the tech pieces, but I would say strategy-wise, what you will see in classrooms and referencing the Building Thinking classrooms, you're going to see a lot of integration among the class with different whiteboards around the room, solving problems on the paper, so I don't want you to misunderstand that it's just a tech piece with integration. There's also desk work that the students are doing as well.
You mentioned that we'll be able to use time to build Canvas Master Course. Would that be Career Ladder opportunities for teachers, or is that just extra work that teachers are going to have?
So we've already organized some sessions for this summer on some of the unit assessments that we're wanting to do. It'll be Career Ladder for teachers starting soon as you guys improve this.
What program are we using now?
Go math.
Go math? What is one thing you think that will do, this will do better than that?
I think the vertical alignment piece is big because that was, again, something very intentional with the team. This was the first opportunity that we brought representatives, PK-12, together. Through those conversations, there were a lot of aha moments in which they realized, wow, this is the first time a kid has been exposed to this, and I didn't realize it. I always thought the previous grade didn't cover this with kids. So there were just a lot of very good conversations among team members to realize that that vertical alignment piece is critical.
Great, thank you very much.
If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Yes.
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 Irving HVAC replacement, Dr. Hart.
Um, yes, since I started this position, I met with all my people I've been working with. When I met with my HVAC team, the first thing they told me is we need to take a look at Irving's HVAC system. And so we've kind of been working through that process and they have been fighting it for over 10 years. And, uh, seems like we've just been kind of taking care of the symptoms, but having a hard time identifying the actual source. Well, now we're kind of to a critical juncture with kind of an emergency situation. And so I have Dave up here to kind of give some more background to where we are at in this situation.
Yes, the construction of Irving Elementary designed a B R F, which is a variable refrigerant flow system for the HVAC for the building. It allows a lot of opportunities if you have parts of the building that are cool or parts of buildings that are warm. It allows the possibility of both heating and cooling within the same system, even within different rooms. Each one of those rooms then has their own box that's mounted in the ceiling that helps control that refrigerant as it goes through so that it accrues or heats as it goes through the system. Currently, uh, since the year of construction or year completed construction in 2014, we have replaced 22 compressors. Those typically average about $4,000 to $6,000 apiece. Once those compressors fail, uh, we of course have to change out all of the refrigerant. Very time consuming and, uh, cost, uh, both cost and time consuming for our staff or a contractor to take care of. Currently, we have four compressors and I believe a fifth one has, since we have established all this has gone out on two of our systems. So they have failed beyond the point of just replacement of compressors. And so two of the seven subsystems are currently not operational. With the pricing that we've been giving, it will cost us around $400,000 just to repair those two systems. As a cost comparison for similar sized building that we have in the district for maintenance over the course of time, since 2018, when we moved to FMX, our work order system, pulling the data out of that, we spent about $170,000 in labor and materials at Irving Elementary. We've spent around $22,000 at Cecil Floyd Elementary for their HVAC. So a lot of difference even in just the upkeep that we have for that system. So solution wise, um, looking at the options that we had, we could either, um, go back and spend $400,000, take care of just the, the two pieces that we have not working. Also want to point out probably the average age life cycle of the B R F generation system that we have is 10 to 15 years. And we're of course here around year 12 currently. So, uh, we are nearing the end of its life cycle. And so in taking all of that into account, um, we looked at options for full system replacement. We believe that's the best, both short-term and long-term solution for the situation. The nice thing is the current generation of B R F system has a life expectancy of 20 or more years, which compares to the rooftop unit system that we have in several of our other buildings. And so a little more comparable for the life expectancy style for that. So we completed, um, receiving bids, um, on what we considered an emergency basis because we have a school that is going to be without heat or air next fall if we do not act quickly and take care of that over this summer. We didn't feel like that was going to be healthy for our students and so we wanted to get that taken care of. We, uh, asked for three different companies to present us solutions as well as costing according to that. You have that there ranging from 1.4 million to a little over 1.5 million dollars for complete replacement of those systems. And our recommendation is going to be to accept the cost from Mitsubishi, which is a subsidiary of Trane for two reasons. One, they are in the middle of the road on the cost. We will get a 10-year parts and 10-year labor warranty, so no cost of the district for 10 years. They will be taken care of locally by Saturday Plumbing and Heating. So we will have quick response as well as a local vendor that will take care of us. The Mitsubishi system is a two-pipe system as opposed to a three-pipe system, which will in turn be more efficient and have less likelihood and should be better on parts should we have issue. So we are making the recommendation to go with the Mitsubishi slash train system, which will keep us in keeping with our district-wide train systems that we have, communications, being able to have mobile access to all that and actually guide those systems mobily like we do the rest of the district. So our recommendation is to receive the bid for a Mitsubishi train for $1,595,000 to replace and re-engineer the HVAC system at Irving Elementary.
Yeah, just one comment I would make on that, Dave, because I went through this with Dave and Matt. And this is kind of the space I live in from a building perspective. And the reason those compressors burn out is that when they first installed it, they didn't design it right. The length of the piping is way too long, which is making those compressors run, which is making them overheat, which is making them burn out. You should never have that experience, but that's what we have. But that coupled with the fact that it's ending its useful life and the ongoing expense. And when we were just doing the math and looking at it, it's like, we're looking at 400,000 just to fix it and it's going to keep happening. So we're going to spend 200,000 a year if we continue with it. But why would we throw 600,000 at a system that really doesn't work right, it's at the end of its life? And so when I went through it with these guys, I absolutely support the design and what they're doing on it. I, I think they've got the right one here in train. So, um, I would make a motion that we approve as recommended by Dave and Matt on the train system in the amount of $1,595,000.
And a question, the reason we're doing this is they just recently.
Second. We have a second, okay.
And, and these just recently went out, so we've got the timeline with August coming for the start of school, so we need to get going.
Yes, and we've been assured, matter of fact, the Saturday bid that we received, uh, baked in, so to speak, over time in an effort to make sure in account for the, the short window they're going to have to make sure we can be up and running for school to start in August.
And, and we had to move summer school. We were going to have summer school in Irving, but because of this problem, we had to move to Cecil Floyd.
And the one other thing I'd, I'd mention is, is Dave and his team, I mean, they're, they're thinking about this from a cost perspective. And there's an old refrigerant in there that they're going to pull out and they're going to keep. And we'll use it to keep the rest of the systems going throughout the district. So I commend you and your team for, you know, just really thinking about, hey, how do you save those dollars? Otherwise you could just be buying that refrigerant on the open market. So, you know, tip my hat to you guys. It's cool.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Schroder. Is there any further discussion?
I just like, I like that we are looking at a local company that we know is going to be around a long time. And, um, so with 10 years, parts, labor, et cetera, that's going to save us a lot of money in the long run. So I, I echo, I don't know all the technology side, but I can look at the money. I, I agree with John, I think this is a very good, a good investment as we go forward.
I agree. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Window replacement funding for phase one construction projects.
Um, yes, as we were discussing phase one projects and having the groundbreaking today, um, as we got to start on that process, the law enforcement facility committee in some of the older buildings had discussed windows. You know, what, what's our plan for windows, what's that look like? And so we had kind of been discussing that through the process. And as we got closer, once you guys approved phase one, um, I had asked Corinna Greer to kind of look at what windows would look like in those buildings, because really if you walk around the buildings, especially the three that were in phase one, you can tell the age of the different additions by the windows that they have. And when you, we've got the pricing back, you can tell why there, there are windows in that, some of those buildings from the 1960s. They're very expensive, but, um, talking to Corinna Greer, talking to Crossland, you know, if you're going to replace windows, now's the time to do it. When you're pulling the building apart, remodeling, adding additions, um, and trying to pull the building more together to where it has a common look and a common feel, also helps with efficiency. Speaking for the teachers in some of those classrooms, um, those, those classrooms get very intemperate. Depending on what time of year it is and what time of day it is. And so, um, we were asking for an additional 1.5 to be added, 1.5 million to be added to the phase one projects for the addition of windows for Jefferson, Royal Heights and McKinley.
I would move to approve the window replacement funding, please, for phase one construction.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hartwell, a second by Mr. Weaver, is there any discussion?
Just one comment, again, I think both Dave and Matt, they're, they're looking at not every window on the building, but we did so many different projects over time, some of them have been replaced. So they're, they're really strategically looking at it and saying, hey, we'll, we'll only replace some of these that are really old. Some of that are newer ones, they're not going to bother with. So again, I think it's a good spend of the district's money because it's not just rip them all off, replace them. It's, it's only do the ones that are the oldest in our buildings.
Correct.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Salary schedules and other salary adjustments, Ms. Topp.
Okay, the, the next salary schedule is all the other employees, it covers them that are, that are not part of a collective bargaining unit. So we're bringing that to you tonight. We're, I've tried to show like the different, um, costs for each salary schedule. Some, we've got some movements and some changing around of some of our positions that we're pulling maybe off of a salary, uh, schedule to an hourly position. And that's based on, um, recommendations from the classification of those positions. The total projected cost for this is $684,620 for, for these salary schedules. Any questions?
Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented by, by Shelley.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Schroder, please vote.
Yes.
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 And then our item from the consent agenda, cooperative agreement with Communities of Wildwood for CMT training.
Hello. So I am asking to renew a cooperative agreement with Communities of Wildwood Ranch. It expired, um, in January of this year. And so that cooperative agreement allows certified medication technician training. The Department of Health and Senior Services provides two different, um, tracks for that training to happen. Both of those have to involve an agreement between a long-term, long-term care facility and school. And so, um, this agreement is kind of the second option, um, where the training happens completely at the facility. And this, we provide oversight of that program and kind of a checkoff for them to get their employees that additional certification. So, um, the, the cooperative agreement is nearly unchanged from the previous agreement. I did add a couple of items to align with the regulations, regulations for the state and, and us approving instructors that are providing that training onsite. So any questions, I guess?
Is there a cost to the district or?
So there's no cost to the district and they will provide an administrative fee of $120 per student that goes through the training. Um, and that's to cover the time for us to verify the requirements of the individual, send some paperwork to the state. And then probably do a few checks through the year, um, on, onsite with one of our RN instructors.
I, the only reason I asked for people out of consent agendas, there was no attachment, it didn't say what it was. So I was like, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm approving if there, there's something.
Yeah, this is, uh, this came up and this has kind of been the story of my first year at Franklin Tech. A lot of things come up. This was an agreement that hadn't been utilized, um, for a year and they contacted me wanting to run a new course. And we realized that our agreement was out of date and we needed to get, to get a new one in place so that they could continue to offer the training.
Could we get a copy of that agreement before we approve this?
We, there's a copy that we have emailed and she sent to show, can you post it to the N site as well? She can post the actual kind of N agreement now and felt that it was a computer problem. The written is only two pages, it's very short. We have a lot of these that are pretty standard with, uh, these. Like I said, it's something that came up last moment on a very busy day with, um, uh, three ground breakings and a lot of hires and those types of things. And, uh, I think the urgency was that they need to start the class prior to the next quarter that we would have.
Yeah, sure, no issue with that, Justin, it's just that there was, there was nothing there to even see, which is why I was like, well, we should really talk about this before we go on.
I think it's great that the Communities of Wildwood is using Franklin Tech adult program to provide their training for their CNAs to become CNPs, I think that's great.
Right, and, and we have, um, this has been in place, uh, previous to this year. So this training has, has happened. And it's happened in two, in both of those formats, uh, that the state provides. And so this would just be allowing that to continue. Yes. Thank you.
How many are graduating?
Oh, you put me on the spot. So, uh, we have 30 practical nursing, um, graduates, 20 RN graduates. And then we have about 20 students from our trade programs that are graduating.
Feels like it's there now?
Yes.
There's no cost.
You use just a personnel. I don't really make that comment, it's.
Um, and Communities of Wildwood is one of our clinical partners for our practical nursing and RN program. So, um, great partner in, in other areas beyond this one as well.
And Justin, you've already reviewed the agreement?
Everyone's had a minute to review, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Ms. Musser. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Hurd, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. We're adjourned. Thank you.